Welcome to the special meeting of the Larkspur City Council. It's Monday, June 29th, 2020 at 6 o'clock PM. We are, of course, still in the middle of the shelter-in-place order from the Public Health Department, so we are meeting remotely. All of the information about how to join us and how to participate is available on the City of Larkspur website. Our city clerk Allison is here in the audience managing the comments and also the emails. And the instructions on how to submit an email during the meeting is also available on our website. So I'd like to call the meeting to order right now at 6:02. And we have set aside two hours for this conversation and hope to hear from a lot of people. So the first thing is our roll call, please.
Councilmember Candell?
I am here.
Councilmember Helmer?
Here.
Councilmember Paulson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Haroff?
Here.
Mayor Wex?
I'm here. The second item on our agenda is public comment. And public comment at this period of time is for members to address the city council regarding items that are not on the agenda and that are not listed on other parts of our consent calendar, which we don't have tonight because we have one item on our agenda, which is a public workshop. So you can raise your hand in this program and Allison will recognize you. And you have three minutes to give public comment on items that are not on the agenda. And what I'd like to ask you to do is just to state your name and the city in which you're calling from. And remember, and I know many of you have participated a lot in city council meetings, the council, because it has not been agendized, does not have the opportunity to discuss it or talk about it until it's actually an agendized item. So let's get started. Allison, anyone in the audience would like to make a public comment on an item that is not on the agenda?
Thank you. Our first public comment will be Robbie Paulson. Robbie, it's your turn to speak to the council.
Welcome, Robbie.
Hi there. Thank you. Yeah, this is Robbie Paulson from the Tam Equity Campaign. And I'm just following up from our protest the other week at the Drake statue. We're going to be submitting a petition to you with about 1,200 signatories about the statue and around de-investing from the Central Marin Police Authority. I think a lot of people don't understand that the Central Marin Police Authority actually has a checkered past when it comes to people of color and people with behavioral health issues. In 2018, Officer Jose Vega was one of several police officers responding to a mental health call in Cordera, where I'm from. And while the other officers used tasers, Jose Vega used the gun. And right now, there's a young man who has a bullet in his spine to this day. Not only that, back in 2016, a man who was coming out of the psychiatric ward died in a struggle with Central Marin Police Authority officers along with Marin County Sheriff. And I think what we have to understand with this conversation about Sir Francis Drake and inequity in our communities is that reinvesting money from police departments has to be part of this conversation as we discuss addressing these symbols of racism like Sir Francis Drake, which was originally, and we have paper clippings from 1950 that show that Sir Francis Drake was used as a way to celebrate white history, white people coming and colonizing this land. And I think it's a multi-pronged campaign we have to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Robbie, for your comments. Allison, we have the comment timer going? My screen just shows it blank or it says just the symbol.
We can do that, Madam Mayor.
Just thinking, do we have a lot of people with raised hands for comments to items that are not on the agenda? I think we should probably limit it to three like we normally do.
Yes, at this time, we have three people in line in the speaker queue. And we'll just remind, we'll start with Sophia Hussein. It's your turn for public comment.
Welcome, host Sophia.
Hi, I'm Sophia. I grew up in Marin County, pretty close to the statue of Sir Francis Drake. And I attended the recent protest to attempt to bring attention to this issue and wanting to rename this for Sir Francis Drake Boulevard and Meowak Way. With this time, I also wanted to just talk about San Quentin for a moment. I'm sure you've all read how cases are spiking in San Quentin prison. Today, I heard that cases reached over 1,000 people. And they're reporting that guards have just stopped showing up to work or calling in sick because they're also afraid for their lives. So this is a huge, huge public health issue. Prisons are already a huge public health issue without a pandemic. But I really, really want to encourage everyone in my community, the people of Larkspur, the people of Marin County, to advocate Gavin Newsom to grant these prisoners clemency so that this doesn't become a death sentence for people who are already really, really suffering in really violent and terrible conditions. There's no way to do social distancing in prison. So I can yield my time to the next speaker, but I just wanted to say that this is a huge issue. And whether or not you're a prison abolitionist, COVID in San Quentin will affect the rest of Marin County as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Sophia.
Our next--
Can I ask a quick question? I'm sorry, is Sky on the call with us today?
Yes, he is.
And this, I guess, either to Sky or to Dan. With the San Quentin issue, do we have any authority to do anything about? I mean, I know it's kind of in our neighborhood, but my understanding is we don't have the authority to do anything in San Quentin. Is that accurate?
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, I'm sure Dan has additional comments about this, but the city does not have any regulatory authority over the operations at San Quentin. That is entirely under the purview of the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, which is a division of the state government. The city council therefore doesn't have any direct authority over operations there. I know that there have been discussions about some aspects of the prison and the city in the past, but nothing that happens there really is under the direct control of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Allison, do we have another speaker?
Yes, our next public comment is from Caitlin Bishop.
Hello, Caitlin.
Hello, council members. Thank you very much for holding this meeting this evening. I would just like to voice my support for the removal of the Francis Drake statue at the Larkspur Ferry Building. Over the last few years, we've seen the removal of statues that have come under a lot of controversy and across the United States. And Marin County isn't immune to any of the controversy. We have a statue that's, and a main artery through Marin County that's named after a very well-known slave trader, rapist, and murderer. So I'm suggesting tonight that through the next few months of discussions, we start incorporating more voices from the Meowak tribe and getting a lot more feedback from them on what they would like to rename the street, what they would like to do with the statue. It really seems like a very easy decision. And considering that other parts of the world are tearing down their statues as well, and even in England, where Francis Drake was born, his hometown, they've started the process of taking down their statues because they don't want to be associated with somebody who committed such atrocities. So I'd like to yield the rest of my time. And I would just like to recommend again that we incorporate a lot of different voices into this decision. And we incorporate the Meowak tribe especially, considering that they were the first ones to encounter Francis Drake and really suffer under his reign. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Caitlin. And I'd just like to remind everyone else who'd like to speak, this is the time on the agenda to make public comment for items that are not on the agenda. So we're going to have a long conversation about the public art that's in the Larkspur Landing area, but this is for items that are not on the agenda. Is there someone else who would like to speak?
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Bee Yu. Bee, it's your turn for public comment.
Hello, Bee.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I might be working the next time you have your meeting, so I just wanted to share my thoughts since we have all your attention.
And this is for items not on the agenda, right?
When is the statue going to be discussed?
It's coming up in a matter of minutes, so just hang on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I just hold on until, and I'll stand mine and I'll speak when that's--
Sure.
Okay.
I think Allison, in the Zoom thing, has to sort of put you into the waiting line again, as we all learn. Is there anyone who is here to speak to items that is not about the statue? I'll just say that. Okay, it looks like we have Julia.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, great, thank you so much. I think the timer might still be going for Bee, but that's okay. It should be quick. I have a few points I'd like to make, and I think we're kind of hearing a lot of different comments that are sort of getting at what I think actually has a similar thread. So we're hearing issues about police brutality. We're also hearing concerns about the statue, and we're hearing concerns about San Quentin. And I think in all three of these situations, what we're seeing is we're seeing a community that is overall very, very well-off and is thriving and is lucky to have the resources that we do, reckoning with sort of some of the sort of people in our community and the history of our community that's a little bit darker. I grew up in Marin County, in the unincorporated area. I went to Marin County Public Schools. And I really didn't learn very much about any of these issues. And I thought that issues sort of facing people of color, facing prisoners, facing all of this was sort of separate from our little bucolic Marin. And I was very lucky to experience that in my own life. But I would really encourage council members to look at what sort of bold leadership in this moment looks like. I understand that you all may have limited authority to set specific policies related to some of these issues, but I think it's still worth understanding the ways in which you can voice sort of what is in the best interest of all Marin residents, regardless of the exact extent of your authority. And I would just encourage the council members to really understand the history and like show leadership within the community in these very, very difficult and scary moments for the luckier and more privileged members of our community and for those who are not as lucky and privileged. So I'd like to yield the rest of my time. And thank you all for coming into the conversation about Drake and all the other conversations happening in the future with open minds. And really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Julia.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
May I just thank Julia for her thoughtful comments?
It looks like we don't have any other hands raised for matters that are not on the agenda. So I will bring it to, is there anyone else? I just see Bee's hand raised, and she's going to speak on the matter that's on the agenda. So now we'll open the public workshop. The council will hold a public workshop to hear from the community about the public art located in Larkspur Landing. The council may give direction to staff at the conclusion of the workshop. I'd like to refer everyone to our agenda page and look at the ability for you to read the 12 public comments that were written and submitted by email in advance. And they're available on our page. You can read them. I sort of summarized them. I'm not going to read all 12 because they are available. Summary is sort of in about four categories. There was an idea that this is public art and a whimsical piece of art, not intended to be a monument to Sir Francis Drake. I'm reiterating what some of these public comments were. Done by a local artist in an abstract manner. The second was that removing it would be a sign, a demonstration of inclusiveness by our community. A third theme was to change the name of the statue and to recognize the artist for his work. And lastly, I'd like to thank one of our contributors, Ms. Demac, for her personal and very meaningful comments that she wrote there. And they are available to read under the public comments section. So let's launch into this. I would like to have the city manager give us a short manager's report about our subject.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be very brief. I know folks want to have this conversation with you. Most of the city's records and files have to do with the actual installation of the statue. The city was required to get a permit from the regulatory agency for the bay so that they could install something that's close to the water. So we have extensive files about that. We do have some information and letters and newspaper clippings that give us a reasonable understanding of the history from the time. In addition, I had a chance to speak to the artist, Dennis Patton, and I believe the mayor also had that opportunity prior to this session. So here's some of the basic facts that we discern from going through the material. Around the year 1988, Dennis Patton began presenting to folks in Larkspur the concept of a statue to honor Sir Francis Drake. But he was very open that he was basing that work on one of his prior works, the wooden sculpture Don Quixote that had existed near the civic center and had been burned down at one point or damaged at one point. And those, I understand, who can recall that wooden sculpture will tell you that they bear a lot of similarity. Then after Mr. Patton began making these presentations, one of the former, then-current, now-former council members, Michael Warnham, and some others formed the Sir Francis Drake Fundraising Committee. The Marin Community Foundation acted as the fiscal agent for that fundraising committee. And that committee raised the funds to pay for the artwork, the sculpture, and arranged with the city so that the city would accept the art as public art. And the city agreed to accept the statue and install it in the location where it is today. And the city contributed going through the processes necessary to get the approvals for that. And then the statue was dedicated and made part of the landscape in November of 1990. Those are the essential facts that we have in the file. Everything else we have in the file, like I said, is much more about the actual technical details of installing the statue. We've put this on the agenda, both as a conversation but also as a workshop. The council has the latitude to give direction to staff at the conclusions should it so desire. And with that, Madam Mayor, I turn it back to you.
Thank you. Do you have the council--
Madam Mayor, can I?
Yes, go ahead, Scott.
I have a question. I'm not sure exactly who this is to you, maybe Dan. Vice Mayor Haroff and myself were at a similar meeting about the naming of, or changing the name of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. What came up in that meeting is a wide variety of histories of Sir Francis Drake. Some people, he's an awful person and he did all these things. Other people said he's not so bad. At the end of his life, he became a really good person and he freed slaves and did these wonderful things. It would be great if we, as a council, had an agreed-upon state of facts that we could all say, okay, we're going to agree this is what Sir Francis Drake did, was, anything like that, so that we're not arguing about whether he did this or didn't do that. Is there some way that we can get that agreed-upon state of facts, some reliable source that can be provided to all of us that we can all say, yes, okay, we agree that's reliable and we're going to take that as fact?
Well, I guess we could find some of the Drake historians. There have been many that have submitted comments. I'm not near or knowledgeable about who they are. But history is a muddled and messy business, you know? And there are often ways it's told by one researcher and historian and told a different way by another. So I'm not sure how we vet that, but it's a good question. Maybe we can bring that up and see if somebody in the audience has some skills in which we can help vet that. Are there any other questions until we get started? Okay, so usually how these workshops really kind of work is they're really listening sessions. We like to hear from as many voices as possible. And then we have a timer for three minutes, like they did on Friday at the meeting. And then after, most people have had a chance to speak or all the people have had a chance to speak, we'll bring it back to further discussion by the city council and sort of close the comments period. But this is going to be an ongoing process as it will be as we move through the summer. And you will have plenty of opportunity to continue to submit your ideas to us. So it looks like we have Bee still waiting in line. Thank you, Bee, for, is she still there? Yeah, she's, it looks like Bee is still there with a hand raised. And I had asked her to wait until this moment, so let's have Bee.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for gathering and welcoming public comments. So I'm a business owner and resident in San Rafael and Larkspur. Sorry, I work in Larkspur as well. So in regards to the statue, I originally thought it was Don Quixote. So I was curious, so I looked it up and found out, like, I would say in 2007 that it was created by the artist, Mr. Patton. And it said on his website that it was indeed Sir Francis Drake. And so I was really appalled to see that we had such a giant statue of Sir Francis Drake, given his history, his limited time in Marin, and of course, what slavers in general represent. And so I saw that there was going to be, there was going to be a protest. And so I was so excited, actually, because I was like, wow, other people feel the same way I do after all these years of being really appalled at seeing that large structure. And then I went to the protest and the Coast Meowaks were there. They were really happy to see us there. And they were like, hey, yeah, we'll put, you know, a different piece of artwork up there if that's welcome. And so I did go to the most recent discussion on the naming of the road. And they're going to have a learning committee, in answer to your question, Mayor. And they're inviting the Coast Meowaks to participate in that historical review of the history of Mr. Drake, who apparently, what I'm hearing, was only here for a few months. So all that to say, I'm in support of the structure coming down and definitely wanting to encourage involvement of the Coast Meowaks in order to embrace the culture that has long been erased in our county and that could really use some reverence in moving forward and towards looking at creating a more racially equitable future for Marin, a more balanced view of our history, as you were pointing out, Madam Mayor, that our history often reflects only parts of the story. And so I appreciate you saying that very much. And I will, and I also, just quickly, I wanted to say that since San Quentin is a public health issue, I wanted to uplift the previous voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Bee. So Allison, I think what would be helpful is if we just list the next, maybe two speakers so that they can get prepared.
Madam Mayor, can I make one comment?
Sure.
Can I just ask for the speakers? It would be helpful for me if you would tell us if you are in favor of either leaving the statue in the name alone, leaving the statue up but renaming it, or taking the statue down? And if taking the statue down, what you propose in its place? That would, that would be helpful for me anyway in trying to make a decision. Thank you.
If they know that, if they've already reached that idea. But you're welcome to express an opinion if it doesn't meet all of those criteria, too. So let's see, it looks like it's next, oh, and just a reminder that it's really helpful for us also if you, you don't have to give us your address, but just the city in which you live. So who's next?
Our next speaker will be Joan Lundstrom. And as a heads up, following that will be Lucina Vedari. For now, Joan Lundstrom, it's your turn for public comment.
Welcome, Joan.
Okay, thanks very much. I've lived in Larkspur about 50 years, been on the council eight sessions and mayor some seven times. So I do remember this very vividly. And this particular statue is in a very different category. Nobody made any, had any discussion about honoring Sir Francis Drake or even thinking about Don Quixote. It was an artist coming forward who was a one-of-a-kind artist and a one-of-a-kind type of statue. And it was, we deliberately did not spend any public money. It was all private money for this. Dennis had built a number of large statues along the shoreline of different welded pieces and he offered to donate. There were never any plaques. There was never any formal ceremony saying, "We hereby christen you Sir Francis Drake." So here we are with a whimsical statue that's been called many different names. So I decided today to call Dennis because I remember actually going to a birthday party of his where he built a whole little village and then invited 500 people over out by Larkspur Landing. Anyway, what was his intent? So today, had a long conversation with Dennis. By the way, his work is recognized in the Smithsonian as public art in America. And each of his statues is quite different. So he doesn't go along and cast a statue on a horse over here and enslaving somebody over there. He just does by hand, and that is hand-welded. So today, he told me the statue had nothing to do with honoring Sir Francis Drake. The sculpture is about the event of discovering California and the quest for knowledge. He said his artwork is also a record of grooving and reflecting in the '70s in Marin, a great time of creativity. And by the way, some of his stuff was at Burning Man. He's a one-of-a-kind guy. He would agree to the city of Larkspur renaming the statue, but he doesn't want Don Quixote and he doesn't want Sir Francis Drake. He'd like to have some idea that it's an adventure, an explorer, or part of exploring ideas. And he would like to be part of a renaming committee. I think it's an amazing piece of one-of-a-kind public art and that we preserve it. And by the way, Dennis said he didn't realize Sir Francis Drake was such a bad dude.
Thank you, Joan.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure. Joan, are you still on the line or is the question to the speaker?
Hi, Joan.
Hi.
Did you hear the city manager's staff report at the beginning of this item?
Yeah.
How do you reconcile his comments regarding the public record as to the intent of the image and placement of the statue?
I think it morphed into, you got to name it something.
But he's on the public record as stating it was intended to be Sir Francis Drake. So how do you reconcile that with contradictory comments today?
And I was surprised, actually, that Dennis said, well, it wasn't supposed to be Sir Francis Drake.
All right.
Thank you.
I really was surprised at that.
Thank you, Joan.
That answers your question, Dan.
I think it's, the next speaker, please?
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lucina Vedari, followed by Robbie Paulson.
Welcome, Lucina.
Hi, thank you. It's Ashley Lucina.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to say really quick, I'll try to make it quick. You know, first of all, it's a statue on Sir Francis Drake. And, you know, no matter what you do, people are going to put two and two together and try to come up with a name for the statue. They're just going to call it Sir Francis Drake, no matter what you call it. I think it's-- I think it's a reflection of the community and I'm just wondering, you know, how are you going to explain Sir Francis Drake to your children? And, you know, what are you going to tell them? I understand that a lot of people don't understand the history of Sir Francis Drake. I happened to grow up on the history of it. Kind of a strange thing. My father has a book called Drake Adelantoli, which I am actually almost finished digitizing for anybody who wants a copy. And basically, it kind of just gives you an idea that a lot of the writings about Drake were written by colonists and you have to kind of read behind the lines. And they use words like plundered and attacked. And I don't know what that means to you, but I actually looked up the word plundered and attack and it means war and death, basically. And so you have to really, well, you don't have to dig anymore that hard, but you'll find plenty out there and you kind of just have to really read between the lines because they will say Drake attacked a village. Well, you know, attacked could mean a lot of things. And bottom line is there's just a lot of chaos. It was chaotic. It meant destruction for the natives around the world that he traveled to, around South America, around Africa, around, I mean, we're not sure what happened when he got here. The documents, some of them have been lost. We don't know if he killed or not. You almost think that you have to go by his pattern that he did, but I'm not sure why he would have scared them when he was here. But, you know, that's something to be maybe discovered. I don't know. I just think taking the sir out of Francis Drake is really healing to the Native American community who whose our ancestors encountered him, our Coast Miwak ancestors encountered him. And the horrible legacy has survived in our family. And I've heard horrible things all my life about Drake. And I couldn't believe that there was Sir Francis Drake in the statue when I finally did see it one day. And I highly suggest that you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
They'll probably be interested in digitizing of that book, so you might want to share it if it's done later.
Okay.
We have, oh, Robbie Paulson.
Yes, our next speaker will be Robbie Paulson, followed by Shannon Hart.
Welcome back, Robbie.
Thank you, thank you. So yeah, Robbie Paulson, TAM Equity Campaign. Now, I would, I want to bring it back to some of these, I have newspaper clippings from 1930 and 1950 that are around Sir Francis Drake. And it's interesting to actually think, why is Sir Francis Drake, this individual who was here for just a few months, why is he given so much space in the public sphere? And the big reason was because he was the first white Anglo Saxon to come to Marin. It was a part of history, Marin's history, that was not a part of Mexican government that was here before us. It was not about Spaniards, it was not about indigenous people. It was about white Anglos, which, as you know, during, you know, 1930s and 1950s, Anglo Saxon, that was actually what we would call white today, that was the dominant group. I think that it's a, as as far as symbols go, it's a very powerful way that we kind we naturalize or make Marin County be the the white place that it's so it's so commonly viewed as. It's a way that we, by making sure that, you know, we have a high school, we have the statue, we have the road, all this this heritage is a way that we can make white Anglo Saxon history the default. When in fact, Marin County has a diverse history that includes people, that includes Mexicans, that includes indigenous people, that includes African Americans, all every, all kinds of shades of people. And I think that I'm just very excited to see all of this work being done to talk about these symbols and bring up that kind of history, the diverse history that we have here locally. So I look forward to seeing the the statue be a creative solution and bring it bring it down. Thank you. Yeah, bring it down. That's that's what you need to hear, bring it down. All right.
Robbie, can I ask you, if I wanted to learn more about the TAM Equity Project, is there a website that's available or?
Yeah, you can check us out on Facebook. And I can I can follow up with an email.
Okay, I just want to learn more about what your group is, your the issues of your group. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, if any council member wants to jump in and ask a question of the speakers, the workshops are more loose, looser that way. So just either raise your hand or just jump in there.
I just have a comment, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
I have paid close attention to things taking place over the over the last few months specifically regarding this issue. And I would hope that we could put a lens on this that looks to the future, that focuses on values, that looks at the opportunity presented to us now, especially with related to the message we send to the next generation. And how we can help focus on, I think comments were made earlier, kind of blending the health issues that we're facing now with some of the values considerations we're talking about with this agenda item. And I would hope we could bring those all together and look to the future with a proactive message that brings people together.
Well said. The next two speakers. Allison?
We'll have Shannon Hart providing public comment now and phone number ending 1402, you are up next.
Welcome, Shannon. Can you tell us where you live?
Yes, thank you. I'm in San Rafael.
Welcome.
Thank you for this special workshop and allowing public comment. I did submit a letter again and I just, I'll just briefly kind of go over three points that I would like to make. And just to summarize it as you requested, I do support public art. And I would support keeping the sculpture and renaming and rededicating it. Along those lines of from what I've been hearing from previous commentators, is the fact that I didn't even know this was Sir Francis Drake and some of the other callers didn't either because it doesn't have a face. This is an anonymous faced sculpture. It is not a statue that commemorates or memorializes a specific person. Because it is a sculpture and public art, I support protecting it and not destroying it. Public art is meant to provoke thought and discussion and curiosity. And indeed, in fact, it has done this by the simple fact that we are here tonight. And then I, again, the 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 face is anonymous, which brings up to the mayor's point after she spoke to the artist, Mr. Patton, that it symbolizes more of an event than a person. And in fact, I think something that we are overlooking with this particular sculpture is that it is carrying a flag. And I believe that placing the flag there makes it more of an event than a memorial to a human, a man, a person. And so it feels more to me as, I know in my letter, I kept referencing Don Quixote because that's who I thought it was when I seen it, living here in Marin for many, many years. But I feel like it's even more of a, it's even, even that is describing something specific, a specific person, where it is more of an adventurer or a you know, wanderer or some kind of world traveler of some sort. So I would, again, I would like to just support the renaming and the rededicating of it and just reiterate that it is public art, this is a sculpture, not a statue. And I don't believe in burning books and I don't believe in destroying public art. And that's it. I yield back my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shannon. And I'll just refer everyone to, if you go to our agenda, Shannon submitted a written letter and it's available for everyone to read under her last name Hart.
Our next caller is caller ending in 1402 and after that will be Anya Shriram.
James Holmes, Larkspur.
Hello, James.
Good evening, council members. Previously, I submitted written comments, which I asked the council to consider. I would like to add here that to do away with this art altogether would be an act of Talibanic fanaticism, woke, run wild. To take it down would also likely submit Larkspur to widespread derision and disrepute for capitulating to fanaticism. And it would be a slap in the face of both the talented local artist who created and donated it and the generous Larkspur citizens who paid for its installation. To those who demand that the statue come down, we should simply reply, the Miwak welcomed Drake. Let Larkspur do likewise. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Holmes. And yeah, stay on the line, please. Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, hi. Yeah, James.
Yeah, fine. I'm on on the line.
Stay on the line.
Hi, James. So you're you're pretty clear about not wanting to take it down. How do you feel about renaming?
I don't, I don't feel strongly about renaming if it is the sense of the community that it ought to be renamed. And if it will preserve the statue, I would have no objection to to renaming. But as I say, there is no, there is no plaque or or other designation. But if someone wants to add a plaque to it, so designating it, I personally would not object to that if that would bring a measure of repose to those who are concerned about it. I do wonder if that would really satisfy certain elements, but I would not object.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question to Mr. Holmes?
Sure, we're giving Mr. Holmes a lot of time here, so let's make sure we're being consistent with our.
What, James, what would be your message to the young people who are asking for us to consider change in the context of our identity as well as other issues related to inequities that might be taking place, that are taking place in society?
Well, as I said, the Miwak welcomed Drake and I think Larkspur should do likewise. I really think our identity should focus on the future and perhaps the immediate past and certainly the present and the problems in the present. And I tend to be perhaps a bit less concerned about injustices in the 16th century. I think William Faulkner said that the past is is always with us. But I think even Faulkner might agree that saying that about the 16th century would be pushing it a bit.
Thank you. I think we'll move on. We have about 10 people with hands raised, so I want to make sure everybody has a chance to contribute.
Our next caller is Anya Shriram and you'll be followed by Lauren Buckley Miller.
Welcome, Anya.
Hi, hi, thanks. I'm Anya, I'm from Nevada. I just wanted to very quickly establish what I'm sensing is a pattern, that the people who are asking to leave it up are focusing on either intent, which is either intent or the fact, I'm sorry, I just, I can't talk without talking about the fact that the last speaker just called it Talibanic to take it down, like he literally compared it to the Taliban. I just want to put that, I just want to put that into the air like I really, that's important so we know that that just happened. And so now I'm going to move forward and talk about the fact that to focus on intent and not the impact that the statue has had, which is that it's a harsh reminder of, you know, what we have let the status quo be. And it's also that regardless of the intention that the, you know, the original artist had, the statue literally iconizes Sir Francis Drake, who, you know, we can talk about maybe the good things that he did do, but we can also talk about all the bad that he did to a group of people who did actually, as the speaker said, discover California. Sir Francis Drake did not discover California. California was notoriously discovered before then. So, you know, to say these things like taking it down is Talibanic, to say that, you know, it's a reminder of how he discovered California, like those kinds of statements seem really absurd to me. And I just want to establish that I do not think renaming the statue is enough of a statement, especially because some of you council members keep talking about how you, like, what is the statement we want to give to our, you know, future generations? And as part of that future generation, I do not think renaming the statue is is enough. You know, it just, to keep it up because of people who are saying that taking it down is Talibanic, to say, to keep it up for reasons like, you know, a positive intent when the impact has actually been so overwhelmingly negative. I think, yeah, that's that's what I think. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Anya. Scott, oh, wait, stay on the line, Anya, you're here, just in case council member Candell has a question.
Yeah, Anya, I just had a quick question for you. In your opinion, if this statue had never been named Sir Francis Drake and it was a statue just as it was, would it still be offensive to you?
If I'm completely honest, yes, because the statue is not wearing pants. So if we put everything aside, I think there is still like a clear issue with it. So, yeah, as someone who was at the protest and was around that statue for a fair number of hours, yeah, put some pants on the statue.
That's the first I've heard, it's not wearing pants. I have to go through that.
Thank you.
Oh, there's, that's not, that's not the only issue. But the lack of pants is actually a problem.
Oh, I do.
Yes.
Well, thank you, Anya, for your comments.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I just make a statement? I think the it's interesting to hear all the comments trying to define the problem. I think there, I think generally there is an image of a conquistador which attracts all sorts of interpretations. And I'm open to hearing what the public has to say about just the, there are all kinds of narratives here that people are trying to create. And I just want to hear about the general image and identity that this presents as the gateway to Marin. I'm interested in that.
Okay. Maybe some other rest of the commenters will speak to that issue, too. Isn't it conquistador, though? That's Spanish, right? And he was English, so I don't know what the term is for the English. Anyway, who's next? It's Lauren.
Yes, our next speaker will be Lauren Buckley Miller, followed by Stephanie Greater.
Welcome, Lauren.
Hi, thank you so much. It's actually Lauren Brown and I'm calling from the Presidio, but I was born and raised in Larkspur, I went to Besage, Kent and Redwood. And yes, we've gotten to know each other over the last couple of weeks. I started the petition June 8th to rename Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. And I've just been very thrilled by the momentum behind the movement so far. So I'm just calling to talk about my hopes and dreams of removing the statue. And I just wanted to make you aware of a couple different articles that have come about since this movement has started. On June 23rd, there was a New York Times opinion piece written by a local historian who I have connections to and I'm happy to connect you to, his name is Richard White. And he wrote, "This monument to white supremacy hides in plain sight." And it's about the Prayer Brook Cross in Golden Gate Park that has historical ties to Sir Francis Drake. And that opinion piece explicitly highlights what Drake's history is as well as what he stands for in terms of being a white supremacist. So I wanted you guys to be aware of that. I'm happy to email it to you. There was also something circulating around on the Sir Francis Drake Facebook page. And it's from the 1950s. And it basically states that Sir Francis Drake Boulevard was specifically chosen to honor the first white man to touch Marin shores, which pretty much indicates a substantive foundation in white supremacy. So again, So again, it's just, I'm trying to create all these connections between why this figure was purposely put into Marin. I think it was really meant to send a message to the community. Maybe not necessarily that we're totally rooted in white supremacy, but that is definitely like part of the foundation. And then the other piece that I think you guys should start to research is a novel called, or it's a book called Thunder Go North: The Hunt for Sir Francis Drake Fair and Good Bay. And I was just very enthralled by it because it's a book that basically disputes that Sir Francis Drake ever even touched foot on the shores of Marin. And so for people defending the artist who is now saying that he's trying to memorialize an event, that event might have never even taken place. So I just, I really feel like, again, for, to echo off Scott Candell's sentiments, like, we should really get behind some facts here so that we can make some arguments as to why this was put in place and how it is justifiable to rotate art. I mean, this is a statue. It doesn't mean that it has to be there forever. We can put it somewhere else and make other monuments to, you know, people like the Coast Miwok. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lauren. And I think, and we have a couple of hands raised to just ask you some questions. I would appreciate if you would email those references, because I think that will answer what Scott Candell's initial question was, was about how we learn about who this person was.
Exactly. Yeah, no problem.
Gabe, you had a question?
Yeah, I did. Lauren, first I want to thank you for starting the conversation, for pushing it along. I just wanted to make a statement and also ask you a question. And I think my statement is, I really believe that the five people on the council and everyone who's called in is really, would want to further social justice. And our sense of community in Larkspur and Marin is somewhat rooted in social justice. So I really appreciate the conversation. My question is maybe a little bit of a tangent. In contrast to taking down the statue, renaming the statue, could you speak a little bit more about an affirmative vision? What do you see in its place? Or what do you see as values you'd want to hand further to, you know, the next generation, for example?
Oh, thank you so much for that opportunity. I am humbled. I have been working with Lucina, who was on the call earlier, and she's a direct descendant of the Coast Miwok. And I would just like to uplift her voice and the voice of the Miwok community. And what's been going around is Lucina has actually tried to start a fundraiser so that they could have a statue that honors the Coast Miwok. I think that the underlying efforts of this movement is to have all future Marin residents and children growing up in Marin have a strong historical knowledge of the caretakers who came here before us. And so I would just be so thrilled if we could consult Lucina and some of her constituents so that they could see their hopes and dreams come true in terms of having a Coast Miwok sculpture dedicated to their ancestors.
Thank you, Lauren.
One last question, Scott, and we have 10 people in line, so let's, Lauren, Lauren, are you still there? Did you learn something?
Yeah, sorry, Lauren, just real quick, clearly, this is not the only place in Larkspur where we can put a statue. You know, if we want to honor certain people, we could do that in other places. If we take as true that the statue is not of Sir Francis Drake, and we were going to potentially rename this statue so it was not an honor to Sir Francis Drake, is the statue itself offensive to you, or is your issue more that we should have more statues honoring Miwok as opposed to this is offensive?
Thank you. I do actually find the statue to be offensive for the fact that, you know, it has explicitly been stated that it is dedicated to Sir Francis Drake. But to me, with the sword and the flag, it clearly shows the ideals of a colonizer. And to, again, like, have people being ferried into Marin and their first few sites of Marin County are San Quentin Prison, and then this giant 30-foot sculpture of a colonizer conquistador. It just, to me, it just has this underlying tone of being very unwelcoming. So, just even with his sword. Thank you so much.
Let's move to, is it Stephanie who's next? Allison?
Yes, Stephanie Greater. It's your turn for public comment, followed by caller ending in 5632.
Welcome, Stephanie.
Hi, thank you for taking my statement. I grew up in Fairfax, California. I have a PhD in cultural anthropology, and I'm about to begin a professorship in Latin American Studies and Anthropology at the University of Arizona, but I am currently quarantining here with my family, who still lives here. And I went to Sir Francis Drake High School, so as an alumni of that school, I've been thinking a lot about this issue. And I actually wanted to just reiterate the points that the last caller just made before she got off, that as a cultural anthropologist, we think a lot about meaning and symbols. And I think she's absolutely right, that even if you strip the name, it stands very clearly for a male European explorer, and is a symbol of colonialism. So I don't think there's a way to take away that, especially the first thing that people arriving to Marin County on the ferry encounter. It's very much a symbol of white settler colonialism. There's no way to change that. I will leave it to other people who are current residents to decide what to do with the statue, perhaps also the artist as well, but I think that its placement, no matter what, how you change the name, it conveys the same meaning, no matter what. I also wanted to reiterate the point of being in touch with historians, as well as other people aware of the history of Marin County, such as the Miwok individuals who are participating. I think Professor Richard Wright, who's not just a local historian, but a two-time Pulitzer nominee and a esteemed professor from Stanford University, is, it sounds like, a really great person to consult with. I have been emailing various historians who have written about Drake, and the book that keeps getting mentioned by them for a very comprehensive overview of his history is written by Harry Kelsey, and his book is called The Queen's Pirate. But there are a lot of books about him, but as other callers have mentioned, there's a ways in which history was interpreted differently depending on the author, their background, and what they wanted to see in that history. So I would do a very careful overview and consult historians and other people who are very involved in this history to understand which authors actually provide a really credible viewpoint and consider him for his deeds rather than how they want to interpret that history. And then I think my last point would just be to reiterate what other people have said, that I think for this to be a really meaningful event, whatever happens with the statue, is to also combine this with really concrete material policy changes that support social justice and racial equality and economic equity in the county. So I'll end there.
Thank you very much, Stephanie.
Madam Mayor, I just want to thank Stephanie for her really well-considered comments.
Thank you.
Looks like whoever ends in 5632 telephone number, you can introduce yourself now.
Hi, my name is Noel. I'm a resident in San Onoflo, a longtime Marin County resident. I'm voicing my support of taking down the Sir Francis Drake statue in Larkspur. I think monuments are extremely important and represent where we are from. So to have a slave owner and trader standing tall at one of the entrances of our county is a pretty bad look. I also want to follow up on what Anya said a few calls ago. Whether it's a sculpture, public art, statue, that doesn't matter. What matters is the artist specifically says it's Sir Francis Drake. There really shouldn't be a debate about what it is at this point. I'm not here to disrespect the artist. I'm here to say, if you're going to put up any type of replica of Sir Francis Drake, then you are honoring him, whether you like to or not. Renaming the work of art doesn't change what it was, and it doesn't change the effect it had and will continue to have if it stays standing. Marin County should be proactive in dismantling the whitewashing of history, particularly in our own county. So please take the statue down. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next commenter will be Yavar Amidi, followed by Julia.
Welcome, Yavar.
Salaam alaikum. My name is Yavar Amidi. I'm a community organizer here in the county. I just want to say, I was just very disturbed to hear that Islamophobic and racist comment earlier. And that was just really, really uncalled for. And it doesn't make any sense to say that people demanding to remove a racist statue, a nod to white supremacy, and compare them to that. So this statue is a symbol of white supremacy. We were involved in the successful campaign to remove the nod to the Confederacy, the Dixie name, in another part of Marin County. This name will be removed, and this statue will be removed. We're just trying to help you all be on the right side of history, and we know you all will be, right? So, Mr. Hilmer, I understand, even if they change the name, sir, just to answer your previous question, right? It would still be offensive. He is a conqueror, a murderer. And you asked, what is the name for a conquistador in English? It's a murderer. And that's exactly what he was. And he killed slaves in brutal ways. He was a rapist. And all of this is documented. So when we talk about the Miwok, Marin County, Marin is the name of Chief Marin, the baptismal name given to Chief Quikmuse, which was a Miwok chief that resisted the Spanish imperial conquest of Marin County and was baptized at the mission in San Rafael, and also spent time at the mission in San Francisco. You guys want to talk about, let's find other people? Well, the Mount Tamalpais Room in his library, people like Lucina Vidalry, Olin Pauli, all of the information exists about the Miwok. The people exist. Marin County has chosen to have these nods to white supremacy, and it's now going to be removed because there's no longer a time for us to debate about it. The debate has been going on for 155 years, or since Marin County was incorporated. Now people are saying, oh, that Black Lives Matter and these other national movements are bringing it to the fore about the structural inequity. Well, don't worry, we're moving on those fronts as well. But these symbols to white supremacy must fall, and they will shortly. They're falling all around the world. All of this is a replication of Rhodes Must Fall, when in South Africa, black Africans led the way for this. Many years ago, they started taking statues down. Now we see it happening in the South. We see it happening in England. A point I want to make about this, to leave you, I hope I'm not antagonizing, but the point is that the European colonizers, who undoubtedly committed a genocide against the Miwok and native people here, and undoubtedly committed a genocide against African peoples, which we refer to as the Middle Passage, the Middle Genocide, right? All of their statues will fall. The sooner they fall, the better you all look. Not that this is for optics, but you're all politicians. The sooner you all act, the better you look. And if they remove Drake's statue from his hometown in Plymouth before you all do it here, it'll look very bad for Larkspur. Thank you so much for your time. Salaam alaikum. Peace be upon you.
Thank you, Yavar.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, I just want to say, I'm thinking about future generations. This is important.
Julia, you're next.
Hi, thanks so much. I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
Thanks for giving me a chance to talk about this topic specifically. I think, kind of speaking to the point about future generations, I'm in my early twenties, so I might not be, you know, in the Marin education system anymore, but maybe I can kind of speak to that perspective as somebody who sort of, the stories that I learned about the world were the stories that Marin taught me. And so I, you know, I grew up in unincorporated Marin County, sort of around Mill Valley, I guess. But it really took me traveling to reservations in New Mexico and Louisiana to understand the history and the current situation of native people in the US, because that was not something that I really learned at all in Marin. I just kind of heard that, like, as a white person, I just kind of heard that native people sort of disappeared mysteriously, kind of around the same time that white people showed up. And that's why, when you look around your elementary school classroom, they're all white and not native. And that was just kind of the whole story. And it really, it took me until my twenties, literally, to know that there are living descendants of Miwok in our community today, which I find just so, like, frustrating. Like, how did I not know who the people are, who, whose ancestors, you know, lived on the land that I grew up on and that I call home? And I think our school, I mean, our schools basically still teach manifest destiny, and our built environment does, too. And we kind of learn in school that that's a myth, and that's, you know, what these people thought when they were coming across the US. But we're still, like, this statue plays into the same story of manifest destiny. And so I think regardless of what it's called, the physicality of the statue really does have a message, with or without a plaque and a name. When you have a presumably male figure stepping forward from water with a flag and a sword and a shield that, I'm not familiar with, like, English breastplates, but it looks a lot like the Spanish conquistador breastplates. Anyway, like, that image and the story that that tells, regardless of the name, is about claiming land with violence. Like, it's literally holding a sword. And it plays into these same myths that we all learn in school and that marginalized peoples in our country and in our county have been trying to tell us isn't the full story. And so I don't think rededicating the sculpture changes the story that people learn or that people fit it into when they drive by. And actually, the sculpture really kind of allows us to forget the stories that don't fit into that narrative. So I worry about kind of classifying the statue as offensive, because I think that's a really loaded term that kind of fits into, like, you know, PC, snowflake, like, all of that. It's kind of another signal of that same flavor. But the point is, like, is this telling what we want it to tell? Sorry, I'm out of time, but thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Julia.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I thanked Julie earlier, but I just, again, want to thank you for your well-considered comments. I think they're very evocative. I think they speak to a future, and I think they also speak to a collective idea about what is taking place.
Next, it looks like Georgietta Beck.
Okay. Hi, this is Georgietta Beck. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I live in Larkspur. I've lived in the area for over 36 years. I submitted a public comment, which you have on your website, and I don't want to read the whole thing, but I did want to make a couple of points. Number one, I believe that the sculpture is a stunning example of public art, which is in very short supply in Marin County. I thought it was of Don Quixote. Most everybody else I knew thought it was of Don Quixote. I'm told that it doesn't even resemble Sir Francis Drake, who I'm told was short and obese. There's no sign at or near the sculpture to say that it's Sir Francis Drake. I would appreciate it if people would take some time to learn more about the artist, Dennis Patton. You can get a really good feeling for him by watching a very entertaining 17-minute YouTube video entitled "The World of Dennis Patton." In my opinion, he's an extremely accomplished and colorful artist and a Marin County treasure. In terms of proposed solutions to heal this divide, I have a couple of ideas. Number one, we could rename the statue, if that's what people want to do. Or we could, or in addition, we could use this as a teaching moment and put a display near the sculpture, which among other things, details the history of Sir Francis Drake. But my real hope is that we use this controversy to spur the creation of more public art. Perhaps the area where the sculpture is situated could become a world-class sculpture park along the lines of the Shoreline Sculpture Park in Seattle. Marin has a treasure trove of artists. We could have each member of our diverse community select artists to create sculptures that speak to what they want to say. How fun and educational it would be for the public to attend each unveiling. We might even get San Quentin inmates to contribute. And what about a work by and about women? A diverse sculpture park could be a statement to the world that Marin County cares about all the people in their community, and that what they say matters. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Beck.
Our next commenter is Stephen Allison.
Hi, Stephen, welcome.
Hi, thanks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hi, so I'm Stephen Allison. I live in Sausalito. I'm a physician who works at Marin Health Medical Center in Green Bay. So thank you so much for hosting this forum. I support taking down the statue. And importantly, in its place, I think there should be a real process, an effort, to find... to find an artist who represents a historically oppressed group to replace it. And that there should be an open process to exploring that. Because whatever you call the statue, I don't think renaming is going to work. It appears to be a colonial figure and others said that much more eloquently before me. Uh, the figure's planting a, a flag. I don't think that that reflects our values. And I regret the glorification of colonialism in my own public education. And I've had to unlearn that. And now I'm raising children here in Marin and I think that we can do better for them. I'll stop there.
What do you, what do you think of Ms. Beck's suggestion that she just did about having, inviting other artists to contribute to, um, to that area and celebrating public art in a different way? What do you think of that idea?
I have no problem with an art park. I think that's a great idea, but not this statue. I think this statue in particular, it in essence becomes the centerpiece of that art park. It's all in response to that. I actually would strongly encourage you that as far as a learning moment goes, the actual learning moment is around the removal of this statue and replacing it with the statue that would come, not from my suggestion as a white man who lives here in Marin, but from a historically underrepresented group.
Okay, thank you. Looks like 7090, the phone call.
Hi, um, I'd like to echo a lot of, of what has already been said this evening, including the pants issue.
Will you just introduce yourself so we know, uh, who we're speaking with?
Hi, yes, um, my name's Caitlin. I did call in earlier. I, um, missed the part where you were only covering things that weren't about the main issue and I apologize for that. So I'm here to, um, sort of more eloquently say my point. Hi, um, I am Marin County native, grew up in Santa Fel. And, uh, like I just said, I'd like to echo a lot of what has already been said this evening. Um, we've learned so far in a very short period of time that the statue was intentionally meant to commemorate the landfall of Sir Francis Drake, uh, which we've also learned may not have even happened, which is, uh, pretty interesting and amazing and I learned something new. Regardless, uh, if you've grown up or spent any time in Marin County, you know that there's not only an entire artery that runs through the county named for a known slave trader, murderer and rapist, but also a statue that is essentially a symbol of white male settler colonialism, holding the sword and the flag and coming at you with a lot of violence. Call it what you want, remove the plaque, rename it what you want, but you can't over, you can't paint over violent white supremacy that it, uh, essentially has come to represent for a lot of people and that's why we are all asking you to remove it. Um, the Miwok welcomed Sir Francis Drake and then he decimated them. And I think a lot of people are upset, uh, by the idea that the removal of these place names and icons is a ratio and a rewriting of history. But by removing the statue and by renaming things like Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, Drake High School, et cetera, you're not rewriting history, you're allowing those who have come back from the brink of extinction and survived this horrible genocide that was put upon them to share their stories that have been suppressed in this county. And if you want more public art, call upon the Coast Miwok and all of the communities, our rich and colorful communities within Marin County. Um, there is very, there are so many amazing artists in this county that I have gotten the pleasure to know over time and I think that they're able to offer a lot of amazing resources. So I'll end there. Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, thank you for your comment. Looks like we have Mia.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to comment on the last speaker and, and, uh, many, on many of the speakers. Um, I'm so inspired by the, the comments made this evening. It reminds me of why I moved to Marin. I'll just leave it there.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Mia, welcome.
Hi, um, this is Mia Lockrits. Uh, I live in Marinwood and I'm just echoing what a lot of other people have said, um, that, and I've, I've lived in Marin my whole life, um, about 22 years. Uh, I think that this statue is offensive and should be taken down. Um, I think it's clear that, you know, once indigenous people have said that this statue is harmful and that they want to be taken down, that should be the end of the story. Um, and I also wanted to address some of these points I've been hearing, specifically Georgia's point, um, about thinking that the art piece was Don Quixote. Um, and I think that that's kind of missing the point because the fact that we could all mistake the statue for Don Quixote or Sir Francis Drake doesn't really matter. It's, it's still representing the same thing. It's representing conquistadors, it's representing, um, that history and that is not a history that we want to glorify. Um, and I also don't think that adding any like relevant information would really solve that because it would still be a sculpture in a very public place that everyone sees when they drive into Marin that is glorifying, um, a really harmful man. Um, and it also is still not telling the history of the Miwok people, which I think is entirely the point of this and what really needs to be addressed. Um, and finally, I wanted to address the point of, uh, adding more art and I think that public art is wonderful and I think that's a great idea, but, uh, to echo what a few comments ago, uh, someone said, you know, you really need to take that statue down. You can't just add other art around it. And I also think that at this moment, while we're really thinking about the racial inequities in Marin, it would be harmful to spend all of this money on public art when we haven't fully addressed the racial and like socioeconomic equity issues in Marin and that that money would be better spent supporting indigenous people in Marin, supporting other marginalized communities in Marin. And before you guys start some million dollar art project, you should really be focused on those people who, and those inequities that are really important to think about right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mia. Lucina, I think she's up, I think you've spoken already. Have you spoken already? Lucina?
Hi, yeah, I think I can make it brief if, or a one-liner.
Yes, make it brief because I want to make sure everybody at least gets a first chance.
Okay, Google Coast Miwok Monument on Facebook and go to www.marinmiwok.com. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
All right.
I'm working a lot, I really appreciate that. Um, yes, Gabe had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, I think Lucina and Mia and Caitlin and everybody that, you know, I came into this meeting largely thinking we're going to talk about the statue, but it's almost like a Miwok Life Matters, you know, Miwok Lives Matter. And I really appreciate that point and all the resources and thoughts you brought in. So thank you.
Who's up next, Allison?
Right now we have Ariane. It's your turn for public comment.
Hi, I'm Ariane. Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. That's unusual. Um, I am in favor of taking the statue down. Um, I think a lot of people have brought up some really good points. As a therapist, I just want to say that, um, I went to school at Dominican University. The diversity in Marin is seriously lacking and, um, it affects people, it affects them deeply. And leaving a statue up that represents, as everyone says, colonizers and people who were violent and rapists and all kinds of horrific, um, actions towards indigenous people, is pretty triggering for the everyday person to drive by it, walk by it. If anyone has experienced any kind of sexual assault, um, any kind of assault, um, they wouldn't want to have that as a representation of Marin County. Um, I know it exists in Marin County. I worked for many organizations in Marin County. So I'm, I'm well aware of, you know, the domestic violence issues here and, um, the sexual assault issues. So it just seems odd that so many people, especially women, have been bringing up how offensive a statue is where he's not wearing pants and is carrying a sword. To me, it shows that, you know, if someone's so triggered by it, that it doesn't matter. Um, and I don't think that that's necessarily the message that we want to send people. We want people to be able to step forward and, um, use their voice. And I feel like it's a very, um, I don't know, it's a very clear message what the statue represents. I'm not sure about the artist. I haven't looked into his work. Um, I just think that the fact that he's saying it's an event, uh, not just Sir Francis Drake, I'm not sure what event would be worthwhile saving there. Um, and if you just keep the statue, I just, I just want to say that, you know, if you had a family member or ancestors or anyone that, or even yourself has been attacked or, um, had something, you know, happen to them that just brutalized them and traumatized them, why would you want, um, a statue of that in your home, you know, in your neighborhood, in your community? And environment matters, I think, um, to Lauren's point about it being so close to San Quentin, uh, when people are learning so much about how slavery is still existing in 2020 with the prison system. I mean, it just sends the wrong message, I think, for our future generation. Um, I'm biracial. I chose after my son was born to move out of Marin County, to be honest, um, because of the lack of diversity. So not to say, yeah.
Thank you for your comment. We're, we're running through your, the time and I want to make sure everybody gets a chance. So thank, thank you very much for your comment.
Madam Mayor, I just want to acknowledge that the image of a conqueror is not necessarily what our values may be intending to project. And I think that was what the, uh, the previous speaker was trying to convey.
Brandon Johnson, you're up next.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Tell us, tell us where, what city you live in.
Yeah, I live in, I live in Forest Knowles. And I'm alumni of, of Drake High School as well. I just want to say, um, thank you all for showing up, for speaking, um, for standing up for indigenous lives, black lives, um, for, um, victims of assault as well. I think that's, that's important too. Yeah, I, I think that it's, it's key to remember that, that this has a lot to do with trauma we heard from, um, Lucinda, the stories going down generation after generation of Sir Francis Drake and this repeated trauma, um, of colonization. And I think whether, you know, whether the, the artist intended it to be the commemorating this discovery of California, I mean, that's just as problematic, right? And if it is Sir Francis Drake, then for all the reasons stated before, that's extremely problematic as well. Um, and obviously with the information that folks are going to give you guys, you guys are going to be able to see that as well and I have no doubt about that. I think it's important to note that because Sir Francis Drake, uh, is a symbol of white supremacy, um, when, when you're surrounded by those symbols and this kind of selective version of history, um, like a few of the callers have talked about, it becomes this form of socialization. Okay? And that's really where the, the big issue is. And so, um, it becomes this kind of self-perpetuating, um, self-reinforcing, um, mechanism of white supremacy. And the best friend of supremacy is also inferiority, right? So, um, racial inferiority, the indigenous, um, obviously Sir Francis Drake being, uh, involved in the slave trade, inferior order, inferiority of black lives as well. And so that's, that's continuing trauma. I can't separate seeing this Francis Drake name, I'm an African American, I can't separate seeing this Francis Drake name from, um, visualizing my ancestors in chains. That's just, that, that comes up, no matter how I repackage, um, Sir Francis Drake, that association is there. And so I just want, um, to make it clear that there's repeated trauma here. And so the longer it takes to move through this, the more repeated trauma there's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you for your, um, your personal comments there too. I appreciate it. I'm learning a lot from all of you. Um, Gabe has a question, have you, Brandon, if you're still there? Oh, I think he went off, though there he is.
Yeah, Brandon, yeah, I wanted to really thank you for your comment. I'm, you know, thinking to myself as a council member, I don't really want to adjudicate history or adjudicate art and all of the ambiguities, but your comment about inferiority is, is very powerful and I'm looking for something that, you know, unifies our community and the reversal of feelings of inferiority sticks in my mind. So I want to thank you again for that.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for lending me your ear.
Bureau Perry, it looks like is next. Bureau?
Hi, hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Um, thank you for taking my call. I grew up in San Anselmo. I moved to San Anselmo recently. I have studied Latin American studies and I have an undergraduate degree and also in public space and public art. And I just wanted to briefly say that the public space is a canvas for the collective identity. And if we can use and harness the collective space, the collect, the public space with a new statue that represents healing, so that people who feel that this statue triggers them because it is a representation of, of colonialism and genocide, that, that is a huge step towards collective healing. And I just want to express that it's a very powerful, the public space is a very powerful tool to express what we want for our future. And the wave of healing is, is, is upon us. So I think if we can, we can make this happen and put something there that speaks to the voices of healing and reparations, that I, I would like to support that. Thank you.
What, what do you think of that first comment that we had about creating a, um, I think it, I can't remember who said it, a learning committee and invite, um, the Coast Miwok and other people to contribute ideas?
Definitely. That's, that's definitely the, I would, that would be the principal step, the first
Looks like we have, um, Cindy Winter up next.
Hello, City Council. I have a letter in the file, so I'm not going to repeat what I said there, but I was listening to all the comments about the clothes that the statue was wearing. And this book was published in 1600, the book, The Imperious Gentleman Don Quixote of La Mancha. And in those days, that is what gentlemen wore when they sent, set out to a, on a voyage or an errand of some part. And Gustave Dorey and Honoré Domier, who illustrated the book later in the 1800s for, um, the French people at the time, they used the same type of clothing. And the, the lack of pants on this statue, the gentleman of those days wore tights. This statue was clothed, he was clothed as people back in those days. So you can interpret the statue as you want, but I think when the artist contrived it in his mind, he was thinking of these visual images from the past. And that's all I'm going to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. We have someone who says, no Drake statue. But if you'd like to introduce yourself, you're welcome to. We're all reasonable people here, so.
Yes, hi, thank you so much. Yes, hi, thank you so much for taking my comment. Thank you. My name is Chloe Erskine. I just changed my name just in case you didn't get to me, um, to get the message across. And, yeah, um, I'm a public school teacher. I was raised in Marin and I currently work in Oakland. I just jumped over to this meeting, um, from the Oakland School Board Special Meeting right now. Also in line to give a comment there too about our facility's use for next year and funding for our most vulnerable students. Now, I was not. Now, I was not a vulnerable student. I grew up with two loving parents in Mill Valley. And when I was nine years old and we did the like, sort of like, like history lesson where you got to dress up as someone, I dressed up as Sir Francis Drake. And I did a whole report on him. And I learned the nine-year-old version of who this person was. And I thought like, that's really cool, I want to sail around the world. That was literally what I took away from that report, was like, this guy went sailing and he found new places, that's cool. Now I teach history, 20 years later, literally, to a couple months, and I'm 29 years old. And this man does not belong on the side of our streets. His name does not belong on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. I, I really echo the sentiments of the public commenter who said that the statue will, has triggered women who, and people who have experienced domestic violence, for example, which I didn't even think of until she said that. I'm learning here, just like all of you, too. And it's, it's just the important and right thing to do, to take the statue down. There are so many other things that we could be memorializing and celebrating in, in Larkspur, a place that I really love, still my favorite place to take the ferry, more fun than Sausalito because there aren't as many tourists. And there's more, you know, beautiful open space there. But I do not feel the need to see that, to see that statue of a person who ran slave ships, a person who was violent towards people who are Indigenous to the land that we are all on right now, even though I'm across the bay in Oakland. And that is what I have to say. I see you the rest of my time. Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Thanks. Mike N. Hello, Mike.
Hi. Well, not to be devil's advocate here, because I, in, in a lot of ways, really do mean this, but I really think you should keep it. I think you should keep it and I think you should put whites only sign next to it. I think you should put whites only signs all throughout the county to reflect the racism that is in Marin County. And I think that people should feel free to express their racism so that we know who we want to patronize and who we want to spend our money with and who we want to talk to, you know? So I, I think that racists are irrational people. And I think that if we try to rationalize anything, we can come up with an excuse for anything for why we put things out on the streets that are 30-foot tall, you know? It's, it's the point to express domination. And one other thing before I go, I think I still have some time here, and I do want to express this because I mean this sincerely. The conquistadors were known for raping nine-year-old girls. I'd like to know which one of you council members would like to offer your daughters a rape and have somebody put up a symbol for it.
Yeah, Mike, it's, it's, and we need to be a little, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think we need to keep this at a higher level. Thank you for your comments. Looks like Larry Chu is, and has his hand raised next.
Larry needs to unmute.
Larry, you need to unmute yourself.
Larry, you're not, you're not coming across very clearly. Not coming, how about now?
A little better, get, get closer to the microphone.
It's very faint.
Very faint, okay, I'm going to speak up as loud as I can, is that better?
We can hear you.
Okay, I know I've been having trouble with my mic.
That's loud enough.
All right. Yeah, I'm going to keep my comments real brief and keep it in kind of a greater context for, you know, you as decision makers. You know, despite our lack of diversity, we've always strived to be inclusive. And ultimately, we want to accomplish that, you know, irrespective of the different reasons for why people have objected to the statue. You know, ultimately, we need to strive not to offend and disrespect others. You know, what we saw in the district's, Dixie School District discussion, for example, was seemingly, you know, inclusive about the, inconclusive about the origins of its name. But when viewed in the social context of the day, you know, we know it evokes images of the Confederacy and what it stands for. So, you know, if there's a reason for wanting to take it down, I think we have to view it in the context of what the statue represents, irrespective of what its original intentions were by either the person who, who built it or, you know, anybody in the past who has, you know, seen it evolve from, you know, one thing or another, if in fact, you know, a name has really not been assigned to it. We do know what it represents now. I mean, we probably even have a larger issue to deal with because, you know, even the name Amerco Vespucci is now called the question because he owned slaves as well. So, you know, this is a, a real good time to have, you know, this type of discussion. And I hope that Larkspur will stay on the forefront of things and, and be a leader on it. Thank you.
Do you want to weigh in on what Scott Candle's initial questions were? Or do you want to decline?
You know, I, I would favor taking it down.
All right. It looks like Rona Weintraub is there, is up next. And I believe Rona submitted a, a written letter, which is available to see on our Agenda webpage.
Right. So I joined a little bit late, unfortunately. I thought this meeting started at seven, so I don't know whether a lot of this has been expressed already. But, you know, I'm an old friend of Dennis Patton's. And I just feel it's so unfortunate that this whimsical sculpture by this local fabulous artist was ever called Sir Francis Drake. Dennis never called it that. He saw this sculpture as an explorer and an adventurer. And the sculpture certainly reminds people of Don Quixote. And, you know, for people who don't know, Don Quixote was not a real person. He was a wannabe knight from La Mancha in, in Spain with a head full of fantasy and romance. And that's what Dennis Patton is like, a head full of romance and fantasy. And if, if this statue, and if this statue is taken down, please don't destroy it. I mean, if you watch the film about Dennis and what he did to make this sculpture, it should be returned to the artist so he can do with it what, what he wishes. And hopefully, there will be some other community that will accept it as just some adventurer, explorer, or Don Quixote and, and not have these, these references to, to Sir Francis Drake, which we have, unfortunately. I was actually told at one point, I don't know if it's true, I was told that Dennis never wanted to name it, but the mayor of Larkspur at that time, Michael Warnham, was very fascinated with Sir Francis Drake. And he, what I heard was he was the one who wanted to be called Sir Francis Drake. It was never the artist's intention.
Thank you, Rona, for your comments. And I think there's two questions, if you're still on the line there.
I am.
Okay, I think Gabe Paulson has a question, maybe?
Yeah, hi, Rona, thank you for your comment. You know, Rona, since you're sort of speaking the voice of Joan and Georgette and others who really want to affirm the artistic value, and you've probably heard all the comments about how, you know, this is triggering and traumatizing and offensive to others, how do you reconcile with the other side? So you were saying maybe take it down. What are your feelings about, you know, how to address the issues that the other side brought up?
Well, what I would, the, the main thing I would really want is for people to understand that that's not who this was, that's not who it was intended to be. You know, have this on the front page of the IJ and very well-publicize, and then have some kind of a ceremony, you know, taking that name off of it. The name's not even on it, I don't think. I don't think the name is anywhere on it. But, you know, it, it sounds like people are so upset and so traumatized by this, which I, I can't understand, really. It's an abstract sculpture of, you know, this wannabe knight. I think it should be returned, it should be taken down and returned to Dennis Patton. And then hopefully, he would find some other place to erect the statue where it doesn't have this kind of connotation. It's a fabulous piece of art. He's the same one that did the Sleeping Lady in Bonner Shopping Center. And he's done a lot of others.
Scott, you have a question, follow-up question for Rona?
Uh, no, it was the same as Gabe's.
Hi.
So we have Sophia is up next.
Hi, I spoke briefly in the beginning and I wasn't even thinking of chiming in, actually, but I've been really moved by just what I've heard tonight and how people have talked about their personal experiences of, you know, experiencing racism in Marin and how much people had to work to go outside of the educations they received in public school to understand the true history of the place where we live. And I, I want to say also, one thing that I keep hearing is that Miwoks used to live here. I think that's one of the greatest lies that I was ever told in school. I was taught to believe that Indians did not exist anymore and they weren't any left. And that's just not true. And I think we need to acknowledge that there are Miwoks in Marin. This is unceded land, you know, like Indians are here and it's offensive to say they're not. And I do find it very frustrating to continually hear people defend the statue using words like adventure, explorer, which to me, like, is such an obvious euphemism to cover up the violence of actions that people like Sir Francis Drake did. You know, we didn't have the Confederacy in California, but we had Spanish and British colonizers. And I, you know, it is part of a legacy of basically like a West Coast version of a Confederate monument. And so I think it's really, really clear what the right thing is to do. And I really want to echo everyone who's talked about healing, who's talked about a trauma that just keeps continuing. And I think that we can create a healing gesture and we can take a stand and say, we're going to see white supremacy for what it is.
Thank you, Sophia. Looks like we have on a hand, Robert Ovets. I hope I pronounced that correct.
You did, thank you very much. I am a professor of political science at San Jose State University and I live in the San Geronimo Valley. My daughter goes to Drake High School. And I've been listening to many of the people so far who called in. And I think that very clearly, I think for you as elected representatives of Larkspur, the public sentiment is overwhelmingly for removing the statue. And I think that, you know, without having to repeat what very articulate things that many people have already said, I think the issue before you to consider is, what kind of action can you as a council take to facilitate an action that represents how serious you take the issue of racism in Marin? And, and I truly appreciate that you have taken this time out of your busy days to listen to your constituents and other residents of Marin. And I would encourage you to expedite your efforts by waiving or suspending any of the rules in order to pass an ordinance in order to take this very firm and clear action that Larkspur stands against this history of racism by removing the statue and also joining the effort to rename Sir Francis Drake Boulevard and to rename Drake High School. So thank you for your time and listening to everyone. If you find a way to expedite and take quick action on this issue to demonstrate, as somebody said a while, that, that the council is on the right side of history.
Thank you, Robert. Do we, I see no other further raised hands. I want to give people who are still listening to this meeting a chance who haven't spoken yet. Now's your time. If you want to raise your hand and speak up, or you're welcome to. Okay, there are one more person. Joe, you're our last speaker tonight. Are you, can you be unmuted? Joe, can you unmute yourself?
How's that?
There you go, thank you, welcome. You're our last speaker tonight.
My name is Joe Sanchez. My family has been in Nacatio, Tomás Bay, for literally thousands of years. I am Coast Miwok. And what I want to say is, I want to thank everyone who spoke on behalf of the Coast Miwok people. This is a long time coming. And we've been through a lot. And to see now the attitude of so many people is just, it's heartwarming. I'm just so thrilled with the reception that people have come forward. And it really means a lot to me and my family. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Joe, for, for that. I think that's a really good last comment that we've had tonight. So I think we've had a lot of people call in and speak up and write in. So I think it's an appropriate time for us to sort of close the public comment and bring it back to the council for some further questions of our city manager, of our city attorney, and then a little bit more dialogue on it. I would like to just sort of ask a practical question. And that is, we had to get, back in the 1980s or 90s, they had to get a BCD, is it a BCDC permit to put this sculpture where it is? Is there a regulatory process to remove, or do we know?
We don't currently have an answer. We've put in a question to BCDC to ask them if we will need to get a regulatory approval to remove the statue.
So if that's a decision that, so just, it might help the audience if you just took a minute to explain what rules we have to follow along the Bay Shore for construction or earth moving or anything like that.
So BCDC is the San Francisco Bay Conservation and Development, excuse me, Corporation, Commission, excuse me. And they're the primary regulatory body in this case. When you do work in and around the Bay shoreline, you need to go through them. Quite frankly, I'm not convinced they would approve this statue installation in 2020 because they've got a lot stricter about this type of work in and around the Bay Shore. And we're just not clear from the documentation that we received and the permit approval, whether or not we also need approval to remove it because the original permit didn't contemplate that we would ever ask to remove the statue. So we've put in the question and we haven't heard back. If there, if the council desires to have the statue removed and there's a process, we'll report back how long they think that process would take. I don't have an answer for that.
And, and the, is guys or anything else that would be helpful in elaborating on that, or?
No, I think that I agree with Dan's summary. At this point, we just don't know what the process is. Obviously, it's not a major project with permanent construction along the shoreline. But we also, it's not immediately known whether BCDC will require a permit at all or what the process would be. And so we'll just have to wait until we hear back from them. It may be also that they would actually need to know exactly what we would plan to do in terms of the mechanics of the removal in order to process it. But once, but once we hear back from them, we'll have a better idea of what they need to give us a firmer answer.
And, and if I could just add, Madam Mayor, I think the last point that Sky made is actually the most important. I think in all likelihood, they will want us to just explain how we will go about removing the statue.
If we decide that, yes.
If we decide that, yes.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, it's, it's, it's Kevin. And those are all good points. And they relate to an administrative process that we'll have to go through to implement whatever decision that the council makes regarding the disposition of this piece of art. But I don't think that any of that should be a, an impediment to us deciding what to do about it from a public policy point of view. So we'll, we'll, we'll figure, I guess my point is, if we have to, we'll work with them and we'll figure it out.
Madam Mayor, I would just also like to clarify that I serve as a commissioner on the Bay Conservation and Development Commission along with the mayor of Napa, representing the four North Bay counties. So I think we'll get a fair representation.
Okay, it's just, you know, we.
We're counting on you, Dan.
We're working through regulatory means that are environmentally protective of the Bay. And I just needed to make sure that that was clear to people that we do have to follow certain environmental protections. certain environmental protections for our community as well. So, which are unclear at this point, apparently. So who would like to sort of summarize what they've heard and think about our next steps going forward? Seems like we had a lot of really, a lot of really good ideas coming across about learning a lot more about, about our Marin history. And I appreciate everyone's comments about that because I'm learning every day as we go through this. Anyone else want, yeah, Gabe?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I came into this meeting, you know, not sure what the opinions were. Three things stand out for me. Probably foremost really is, is the Miwok history and, and the different offers that people have made to have a learning group. I think removing the statue or renaming it or whatever the decision is, is important. But what has really happened here is a bit of consciousness raising and I'd love to see that as part of whatever we implement. And the second is, you know, this notion, I think our two former mayors, Mayor Lundstrom and Mayor Chu, who spoke as public citizens summarized the spectrum for me. I think Mayor Lundstrom really emphasizes the importance of art and the preservation of art and the respect of art. And, you know, the notion of having a ceremony and taking this down so that we're not destroying something, but we're really affirming different values. I find that to be very helpful. And then what Mayor Chu said, you know, we are not the most diverse county, but we want to be the most inclusive county. And I think another gentleman, you know, who said about inferiority feelings, you know, I think I'm on the council for public safety and for public works, but this is an opportunity for public healing. And, and I really hope that we take this opportunity and do just that. So thank you.
Yes, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to start, I began with a position that I didn't have a position because I wanted to learn more about Sir Francis Drake so we could all have a consensus of who this person was before we decided how we wanted to handle the situation. In the course of this evening, that has become irrelevant to me. What has become clear to me is that regardless of who this statue is, what is named, it symbolizes colonialism, which I think we as a society have evolved to a point where that's probably not something we want to celebrate. And it probably does not belong where it is. Not that it's not a beautiful piece of artwork, not that it wouldn't belong, that it find a great home for it someplace else. The artist could find a home for it someplace else. It doesn't seem to be representative of our values. I would, I don't know if it's appropriate, I'd be fine to make a motion to deal with it at this point. I don't know if people need to think about this or digest it or have further listening sessions. I'm, I'm comfortable with, you know, my position on this and I'll be ready to vote on it tonight if, if the council so chooses.
Madam Mayor, this is a workshop, so I think, I mean, this is maybe just a point of technicality for the city manager, but since it is a workshop, I'm not sure that tonight is the time to make motions. But that was my question, what, where are we going from here in terms of, of process?
Well, I think we get to decide what that is. I, I hear you, Scott, about that. Having this as a workshop allowed a lot of voices to come forward. Generally in workshop sort of formats, this is an opportunity for many voices to be heard to hear about this and then others to step forward for, for sometimes the next conversation. Because it allows more publicity and more conversation that gets out into the community. So others who may represent another opinion would be more apt to join at another workshop. I think what I've heard is we have a lot of learning to do and I'm really committed to learning a lot more about our history from multiple, multiple different perspectives. And I will admit my naivete on a lot of things like this, but I appreciate how many of our commenters were willing to share articles and willing to share books and materials and people to share their stories so that we can all learn a lot more. As far as, yes.
Scott, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt.
Okay.
No, I was just going to ask you, if, if we're not in a position to make a motion or to vote on this tonight, could I ask before we conclude this meeting that we agendize this on a future meeting so that, you know, if people have other voices, they have notice where they can be heard, we have a kind of a drop dead date where we have to make a decision one way or another. I just don't want to punt this off into the future, that's all.
So how do you reconcile that with our need to find out through the regulatory agency if this is, if we have to do an additional step or, or provide additional material to them before we can be permitted to do anything?
So Madam, Madam Mayor, it's Kevin. My suggestion, I think kind of following up with what Scott was suggesting, is that we make a request for the city manager to prepare a proposal that would outline a process that would anticipate the removal of the statue. And, and explain in that context, you know, the different regulatory issues that may need to be addressed in that context.
Well, can I, can I ask, would it be proper for us to take a straw poll to see where we all are on this? Because I would hate to send Dan on some, you know, journey of finding out things by myself here and I'm the only one that wants to dig it down.
No, 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 I think that's, again, Kevin, I think that's perfectly appropriate.
Madam Mayor, I would request that the city manager advise us on the process that he would see addressing these questions.
Thank you. Is that all right, Madam Mayor?
Sure.
The city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's legislative action beyond a direction from the council that your desire is for the statue to come down. I think I would be surprised if whatever permit process we have to go through with BCDC has to come back to you other than as an information item. So I do think the council could essentially indicate its desire one way or the other with respect to the statue and quite a bit of what the staff would then do would be ministerial. We simply, in responding earlier to the mayor's question, wanted to be clear that we don't think we could do it tomorrow. We, setting aside the logistics, we just need to make sure we check every box before we would do something if that's the desire of the council.
The only thing that I would add is, we may need to evaluate to some degree what the, again, what sort of the actual mechanics of removal would mean so that we can make a determination about whether or not any sequel review would be required, which would have to be done prior to a final decision by the city council. But I think that if you come out of the meeting tonight with some preliminary direction, but not a final decision to direct the city manager to come back to you with a report with a, with a summary of what the process would be and any additional actions that are necessary to finalize that direction, that, that we could, we can move forward with that and then plan to come back to you with, with a final package along those lines.
And I would, I would encourage that approach.
So.
Can I, can I recommend, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My feeling is this is a, this is a very, a very tense moment in our national history as well as our local conversations about people and places at the same time as we're all living through a pandemic. I, I really think that this is going to be a conversation that we need to make sure everyone has a chance to, to participate in. We haven't heard from the artist himself. I, I'm not comfortable making a decision tonight without one more opportunity for people to, to weigh in on this, their opinion on this, so.
And, and Madam Mayor, I think that's exactly the strategy that we've just been discussing. I think what we're needing is some direction about how this could happen, but I don't think we're in a position to make a decision tonight. So my strong recommendation would be to allow the city manager to work with our city attorney to put together a, a strategy for addressing the options that we've been discussing this evening and then we'll bring it back for another session at a regular city council meeting.
And what are the options, what are the options that you think have risen to the fore? It sounds like it's pretty much three and that I've heard, which is leave it as it is, rename it, add more, four, add more public art or removal. Did you hear any more options?
I heard a much more varied range of considerations in the conversation, so I'd like to hear more information as described by Vice Mayor Harrow.
Yeah, I think.
Can I make a recommendation?
I'm, I'm sorry, just again, I think what I had in mind was a, a agendizing this as council member Candell suggested for a future city council meeting with a couple of different options. We can talk about what the recommended, recommended option might be. I certainly have a strong view about that myself, but, you know, we do that all the time. So I don't think that should be all that, all that complicated. And then we can have a vote.
And could I, could I ask when the city manager gives us that report, could we please have a rough price tag of what we're talking about, the procedure that it'll take and estimated costs? Because I don't, I don't know exactly what we're talking about here, but if it's something astronomical, that may be a consideration that we have to think about.
Some of that will depend on, on whether the statue is to be preserved, to be honest, because we've already had some preliminary evaluation. We're having a difficult time finding a contractor that will even talk about this if they have to be certain they'll preserve the statue. It, it was quite an effort from what I understand to install it and removing it while trying to preserve it, it will involve bringing in a crane, it will involve quite a bit of reverse engineering. This can be done, but just want the council to be aware of that.
Please include, please include the cost estimates for removal.
And restoration.
And I guess my, my. Go ahead.
I just, I just want the council to be aware. We have an obligation to confer with the artist, but you, but the city owns the statue. So perhaps if I'm following the same train of thought as council member Candell, I don't know what the appropriate expenditure or taxpayer money is to preserve the statue. And that's really a policy question for you.
Dan, what I would ask is if we could have two numbers, one to not preserve it and remove it, and the second to preserve it and remove it. And maybe we could talk to the artist and there may be some private money that might be available. If the artist would like to preserve this, would like to put it someplace else, I would love to, I don't want to destroy somebody's art, you know, if there is an option, you know, the artist has someplace to put it, has the means to restore it, all those things. I'm just not sure that would be the responsibility of the taxpayers. But again, we would have to see those numbers to, to really understand what we're talking about. I would just ask that the, the artist be involved in that conversation.
We can do our best.
First, you know, this is our first workshop to bring up this conversation, which is why I think we have a lot, a little bit more investigative work to do to make sure that we're being reasonable and spending money wisely also. So, go ahead, Dan, you were going to say something?
We can do our best to come up with those two numbers.
Thank you.
So, Gabe, is there anything you want to add?
Just a clarification, it sounds, you know, I came thinking there were three options. It sounds like there are five. So, you know, on the removal, there's remove and preserve, just remove and destroy, or just, you know, not worry about it, add more arts, rename and keep, or just keep as is. You know, I mean, just, just so we, you know, possibilities. And to Scott's point, I do feel that we don't want to postpone the decision and to your point, Mayor, I don't think we are, but I'm appreciative of this discussion and I don't think it's punting into the future to have further discussion, especially if it includes the artist and possibly Miwok and other, you know, concerned members.
Dan, you had something?
Yeah, I would appreciate really clear direction from the council about whether you want the option explored of additional art. I think that actually is a very complicated question with a number of regulatory agencies. The regulatory world's very different in 2020 than it was in 1990.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're at that level of, I mean, this is, I would, I'd like to keep this conversation narrowed to this particular object. I would love to see more public art. I just don't think we can engage that within the same geographic area at this moment because of all the regulations we'd have to go through too. Are people comfortable with that, that we're, this is really about this one specific? Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, so I'd like to go back to the suggestion that I think council member Candell had, which is to at least have some kind of a straw poll expression of, of a direction that the council wants to go. I mean, I know I have strong views about it. I think other members of the council do as well. And if we could at least get that direction tonight, I think that would be helpful in providing some clarity for, for our city manager and city attorney to, to go to the next step.
All right.
That would be my suggestion.
We can do that. I, I'll begin. I'm, I'm haven't, I haven't heard enough yet. I, I've heard a lot of really powerful things, but I need a little bit more of the practical nature to be able to make a fiduciarily responsible decision. So I'll remain neutral on this one right now. Anybody else have a?
Fair enough.
Because I, if we get a price tag of $500,000, I just think we just need a little bit more information. I so appreciate the comments that people have given us. It's really in my eyes to a lot of our community that I don't know as much as I need to know about. But would you like to conduct the poll, Kevin?
Well, you're the mayor, so you get to do that. But I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to express my views. I think the statue needs to go for a variety of different cultural, sociological and historical reasons. It's not appropriate and needs to go and we need to figure out a way to make it, make that happen. So we can work out the administrative process that needs to allow that to occur. But I personally think I've heard enough, so.
If I could.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Just to comment, what I heard the city manager stated, he's looking for as concrete directions as possible from us. So I'm going to suggest that we ask the city manager to find out two things. One is the process and cost of removal without worrying about saving the art. And the second is the process and cost of removal with preserving the art, restoring the art at a different location. And, and I don't know if it would be the city manager's job, but I think somebody should contact the artist and, because if there's a difference between those two prices and that difference is significant, and we as a city council don't feel that it's our, you know, responsibility to do that, which again, this is just, you know, we may or may not agree, but I would like to have all the ammunition that we need so at the next meeting we can make a decision. I would like to know if there is a difference, if the artist or some other foundation would be willing to foot that bill so that we could move this statue to the place of the artist's preference and it not be financially draining to the city to a point where it's not practical.
And I appreciate that. I just want to be clear, I'm putting a, I'm not putting a dollar amount on the pain and the true emotional comments that we've heard from people tonight. I'm just trying to make sure that we are being good fiduciaries of the tax dollars and get all the information before we finalize a decision. That, that's where I'm coming from.
And Madam Mayor, that, I'm not saying anything inconsistent with that. I think the suggestion was to get a sense of the council about the overall direction that we want to go. And I think it's important if. And I think it's important, if folks are inclined, to provide that, provide that sense if we can, tonight. There are all kinds of details would have to be worked out, what different options might be, whether the, what the artist wants to do, whether it could be relocated, all that kind of stuff. But I think we do have an opportunity tonight to express a collective view about whether it's appropriate to maintain this statue in that location. However, it, whatever the ultimate disposition of it may be, we'll figure that out. But I do think it's important for us to provide some sense of things if we can tonight.
Does that make, has that more clear to you, Dan?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Madam.
Yes, Dan Hilmer, yes.
I, I would also like to include as, as practical, an opportunity to invite how we might best express our values and intentions at this location as a gateway to Marin. So if there's any way to invite the opportunity, I know we won't be able to ask artistic inquiries here, so I would just like to leave open the opportunity to what we might do to best express our values at this location in light of the fact that we might be removing something here. And I also want to recognize the fact that, that the statue of the, that we're all talking about is something that has taken place in quite a happenstance environment. Now, there was a series of decisions here that were maybe not so focused on the things we're focused on today. And given the, the fragmentation of all those decisions, I think there's an opportunity here to focus on what we might want to send a message about relative to Marin and our society in general. So I think there's a great opportunity here that we should really take advantage of.
And this being our first workshop and hearing directly from the public about this particular idea will now allow the opportunity for us to, to have this resonate throughout the community and get some of those ideas forward too.
All right, can I ask a question? I, as a single city council member, I don't believe have the authority to ask our city manager to do anything without a, the approval of the rest of the city council. My thought was to ask the city manager to find those two things out, the cost and process of removal with preservation, the cost and process of removal without preservation. Can I ask the city council if you approve of that recommendation for the city manager?
Gabe?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, in the straw poll, and to, to your point, Scott, is I concur with, with, with Councilman Harrow and with yourself. I, I just want to amplify that the, you know, the discussion of what we're trying to replace this with is important, as well as making sure that we've heard all our constituents. The people tonight have been very moving and very vocal, and I, I really want to make sure that we've heard everyone because it's, it's an important topic that's come up, and then the financial aspect as well. So short answer is, yes, I think that's good direction, I hope we can follow that. And sort of to, to Mayor Way's point, I, I hope we can have more discussion and it's not seen as, as procrastination, but really to, to evolve this because it's a big topic.
I endorse that.
And also, I, I, I think we need to, and I, I'm really pleased we had Mr. Sanchez as our closing speaker because he's, this is allowing a lot of voices to come to public process that haven't been heard before. And I appreciated many of the comments that I think people are participating on a level that will help to engage other members of our community in ways they haven't been engaged before, if that makes sense. Because this is a, we tend to, sometimes in public process in Larkspur and other smaller cities, kind of look at narrower topics, and this is opening up a much broader topic to the, the larger community. And I would like to encourage more of them to participate with us.
And Madam Mayor, if I could, just, just as a reminder, because I think we're kind of coalescing around a little bit of a direction here. But the other issue that's lurking in the background is the, the naming of the Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. That's not, we're not, we're not addressing that here, we're only talking about the statue right now, and we're gonna have a separate conversation. As council member Candell noted, we've already been participating in that conversation, but it is a separate conversation, and we'll bring a lot of these issues out. But our, our task really is to determine for the people in our community, residents in our, of our community, the disposition of this statue. And we don't have to decide that now, but I'm getting a sense of, of a consensus that we need to explore how we could possibly remove the statue.
Is there anything else you need from us tonight at this initial workshop?
No, Madam Mayor. I under, I have directions.
Okay. So just for the benefit of the public who may still be listening, we, to summarize, we really appreciate your participation tonight, and we will agendize this again and encourage more voices to come forward and offer their thoughts and opinions on it, while we, at the meantime, we're getting some more practical information about process, costs, and the practicalities of matters. That's an important part of city governance too, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I thank our council members, all of them, to how they've addressed this issue, sort of a new threshold for our city council, be talking about these things. And I just want to, I just want to express my gratitude to council members Candell, Bolson, Harrow, for everything they've done to reach out to a broader segment of the community, bring these issues into focus for, for Larkspur.
And I'd also like to thank the public who's participated tonight and for their patience in how we try, through this crazy Zoom type of meeting, to try to engage in sensitive and topical matters when we can't be in the same room together and we can't have those nuances of language and speech and body movement that we usually get within conversations like this. So we're trying our hardest and we're really learning a lot. And to close, I'd like to make sure that the people who have material that they want to continue to, to bring forward that will help us all be educated in ways that we haven't had a chance to in the past, they can, they're welcome to send it to the city council here, and we can take a look at those materials too. I'd like to learn as much as I can. So if we don't have any other thing on our agenda tonight, it sounds like we will put this.
I would just like to close with one thing to correct the city manager's initial impression of what I have on my head. It's not, it's not a gamer's headset. It's a zoomer's headset, so.
So for, for the public who's still online, we have two council meetings a, a month. Janu, the July one is already agendized. So look forward to paying attention to when this matter will come up. And you can subscribe to the city's website, Alert Me Now, type of newsletter, and get pinged when these kind of meetings will come up. And let your constituent, your friends and family also who would be participating in topics that we haven't yet heard, bring them forward too. And at that, I think we will adjourn this public workshop for tonight and look forward to speaking about this issue when we, again. Any other closing remarks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have nothing more to say.
Thank you everyone for participating. And I look forward to continuing this very important conversation. Good night, everyone.
All right, have a good night, everybody.